We still have the upper restroom. Not much needs to be done. We just keep accessible path to get into those because they're right now they're the ramp is out of compliance. There's a threshold that needs to be fixed, so we actually went in and let's say Cruz last year and re tiled it. It looks really nice inside does. We got a little bit to do on the rotary shelter railing. That's on this that the building on the bottom down.
Right.
We have the volleyball court there. It's kind of like the bocce ball. They didn't need it. It's one of those activity courts. There's nothing you can do to make it compliant, you know? So we have a question mark on it. I mean, it's it's a sand volleyball court with a rubber boundary in it, so that's why we have the question marks. I don't think there's going to have to be anything done to it. We do want to go in and put a border or turf around that that way people that are utilizing it aren't stepping in goat heads and stuff like that.
Yeah, there's a mess down there.
Yeah, we want to get that cleaned up. Walking paths, so that goes down into what you questioned about the lower.
Yeah.
We have to make that that blocking path is in compliance. It's basically cross slope and there's some pretty big cracks in it. So we probably the easiest thing to do is to come in and do a concrete overlay instead of asphalt that we can control our grades with concrete. We've been finding that asphalt.
Would you do the whole path with concrete? Geez, that would be a tremendous.
It's a walking path and a very expensive path, but we've been trying to do things with asphalt. We just can't seem to get them in compliance because asphalt moves.
But is that is that an issue though? I mean, is somebody or I mean, is it necessary to put the concrete? I mean, asphalt?
It it's necessary to get that walking path since we own it in compliance. That's that's where the that's the kicker, guys.
Probably the best thing to do is do it in phases. Instead of trying to do it all at once.
Exactly. And they've been good. The government Zion, our attorney has been he's worked with us. He's given us extensions and I totally agree with you, Mayor. I think there's no way we try to do it all at one time. Maybe we we bid it out in sections and phases.
Does that same logic apply to the state Boulevard then? We only it has to be compliant?
Well, that keep in mind the Boulevard now that's a and it's a it's a dirt trail, so it's not dirt. It's it's the fines we call crusher fines. And that is an acceptable surface.
Really?
Yeah, but it still has to be in the right slope and whatnot. It has to be compacted, but I don't see us wanting to go back to crusher fines at Central Park since we have a small pad there.
And what the lake part would be, is it part of that?
It's part of that path.
Improvement to where we're going to clean it out and everything?
Well.
I mean, I know I talked to Steve about the people complaining that the lake needed to be addressed. Maybe I think it'd be a good idea to the plan on putting a couple more of those concrete, I mean, the brick walk deals around the thing where people can fish.
The bump downs.
The bump deals, yeah. Because it seemed like they were working for a while, but and again, maintenance is a problem because the cattails go over it and the moss. I know it's a tough job, but a lot of people have really complained about that. And it does need to be cleaned, yeah.
I think maybe one of the best things is something like there are so many different components that have to get done with that is to get a a plan for the entire Central Park. We know that the the main portion is something that you're working on now, but you'd like up and down the lower portion, get an entire plan together as to plan for the future, you know, year one, two, three, four, and see how far you guys what you have, what you want to do and how many years it'll take. I mean, that's the best way to do it. And then you can also look at being this apart, maybe get try to get funding from to go.
Sure. That pretty much takes care of Central. On to Kit Carson. We've got a curb ramp at San Pedro in Topeka that needs to be addressed. There's playground railing in there and then they want accessible route up to the bandstand. Not necessarily onto the bandstand, but up to that upper area. So that means we'll have to redo one of those sidewalks with the ADA compliant ramp.
Did we get that other playground piece that had that was broken?
We have not received that yet. I don't understand. I don't it's from church recreation. We've checked with them often and it it's just I don't it's it's unfortunate. No, we don't. We not have it.
I think people's response is directly inversely proportional to the number of times you call.
So not a lot to be at Kit Carson. Southside parks, we got to get some ADA lower parking. I think we need two, if not three, so we're looking at maybe doing at least an area and then the ramp from the lower area up. That's what the lower access is. Skate park route, not necessarily making the skate park accessible, but at least where that covered canopy is, we have to give them an accessible route. Somebody wants to go over there and watch their grandkids, whatever. We know that needs to be done. And then, yeah, it's on our list. They want a curb ramp at the Shore Jackson, which is right on the corner of the skate park. And that can be worked in. Not that there's any sidewalks that lead to that, but they want a curb ramp there, so some of their requests are it just doesn't make any sense, but, you know, we can go back to them and perhaps argue that, hey, there's not even a sidewalk in this area.
We could prioritize what we need there too. Because, you know, spend these more money on some of the other stuff that's needed.
Right.
What about, I know we've talked about that skate park itself painting. We need to kind of really watch that because you go by there and man, the graffiti in there is terrible sometimes. I don't know what to do about it. I don't either. It's a it's just terrible.
That's what we find is easiest is the repaint, you know, when we have graffiti. We have an ice blaster. It doesn't seem to work as good as it was advertised. We did try it, but but I mean, we can still try it again. It's a machine that we take the compressor from Public Works and hook it up to it and then take ice and feed it and suits his ice out at a very high velocity and supposedly knocks the paint off, but my experience, it just we tried it on the brick over on on the corner at five points.
Yeah, I've seen that.
Yeah, it just it didn't it didn't hardly phase it. So.
I wonder if there's some kind of mural project that could be done in there because a lot of times murals prevent people from doing graffiti.
Sure.
So I wonder if there's something.
That's an option. We obviously did the mural down here at the Waterworks building.
You might check with the lady that did that.
Yeah.
Say they want to do something like that over there, they might.
Maybe. Now they don't have a big canvas, right? They have a canvas.
Yeah, they've done a good job with this down here, so maybe maybe you want to do something.
Yeah, there's there's a few coats of paint in there. I know that.
Yeah, we're going to be putting a few waters if we go get something done with it.
It's frustrating.
Yeah.
Curb ramps, then we have the basically one at Snyder and Stone Hole, which is on the other side. At we need to add one more curb ramp, basically going into the lower central part that you're asking about.
Let me ask you a question just for curiosity while we're talking central park. You guys put that big gate there up on the line there by the hill. What what exactly is going on with that? Are they going to redo that?
I questioned the same thing. That was done with the previous people that had the fest there.
Blues Festival required requested.
Yeah, that was a request by the.
Blues Festival.
And it isn't working. I mean, are we going to just take it down or what? What would be the issue there? I mean, it's useless the way it is.
I think well, I I think I would just leave it just in case we ever need for access to get in there.
But you can't do the access because it's still fenced on the other side. You have to take out that fence because.
Oh, it's fenced on. I didn't realize.
Yeah, it's fenced. It's that's why I said you put it there and it's just like, why wouldn't even have it there?
To put a gate.
Take a look at it when you go by there.
Okay, I'll have to look closer at it.
Yeah, I mean, I thought there would be an opening there where you can drive in, you know, where you can roll the gate back, but there's not an opening.
The fence is still.
So if the fence is still there, oh, well. So evidently they didn't whatever they planned, they finished it.
No, they only used it one year.
Yeah, but it the fence, I don't even know how they use it because the fence is still there.
I'll check and do it.
Check and see. I mean, for curiosity, because it's there. If you go down there and exercise a little bit more, Bob, you can probably find out a lot of this information.
That's a good idea though. We could take these on your.
There's another guy right there.
He's always there, so he should know.
Right, right. Should exercise.
He's always walking his dog.
Yeah. I do want to say one thing before I forget. You guys have done a really good job on the striping. It's coming out really nicely.
Thank you.
It really does help. People have really complimented it.
We're putting the thermoplastic down as we speak. They started yesterday, last night. They were over there, had a few final questions, so.
Very nice.
We're not we're not putting any thermoplastic on our bricks, as you can remember, okay? They're they're recommending they got a rubberized paint that for this time here, they thought would be a better option, but we're not doing any thermoplastic in our bricks because the way the bricks move, it just crumbles and breaks it up. So you see a new crosswalk right there?
Yeah.
Paragraph thirty six, so that's our basically our our parking lots. We have a little bit we have to do at Cobliners Memorial. Elm Street Commercial, that's where the bathrooms are. Maple and Second, the police station. Pedestrian access is question mark because they're they're telling us that we need to have pedestrian be able to come off the street. This way you access the and this was the accessible route was the drive to the lower parking lot. From there you can get out of your car and it's accessible into the building. There's no accessible route like if you're coming up the street to come into the building. So we're still trying to hammer that out with them, trying to figure out what's the best way to go if we have to do that. That's that's a tough one and a lot of grade at the PD. You're right up against Maple like that and it's it's steep.
And there's no public interest at the lower level, is there?
There is not. So what what you would do is drive into the upper parking lot, drop down to the lower parking lot if you were in, say, a van. Then from that point on, you're you're accessible into the building.
I see.
And there's no there's no elevator in that structure either, so. We don't want to go there.
Yeah.
That's crazy. Animus in Maine. So that's just, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we leased this parking lot, right? The one over here on the corner.
Yeah, I believe that's correct.
We do, yeah, but we still since we leased it, we're still on the hook to make sure it's compliant and it's just putting in one ADA parking space. So that's a pretty easy fix. They had an issue with the the dog park and we're going to look at that. I think one of the again, it's one of those paved parking spaces. It was probably in compliance when they paved it and then after you roll it and move around and a couple of years later, asphalt tends to move and flow. It's it's they found that it wasn't in compliance, so we got to look at that. I think it's not a big issue. Centennial Park, Centerfield, that's owned by the college, so we're not responsible for that. That's why there's money through it. And then at the wormhole trailhead, I think we're going to put a couple. Got to we're going to put a couple. Thank you. Thank you. Over there, so we can't obviously make the wormhole trail compliant, but at least at the parking area, if somebody wants to pull off there, we have an ADA compliant picnic table and a path to it, so. And then number five, that's the project that we continue to work on every year. We just spent nearly a million dollars last year. Obviously saw a lot of the ramps up Pine Street. We're getting ready to go out to bid again. This year, I think the emphasis we're going to do is going down East Main, try to get maybe eventually a continuous ADA path to the to the hospital is our goal, so.
I know you got something we've discussed in the past is, you know, let's get our that main area taken care of completely and then, you know, do get a lot from there.
Right. And we're going out to we're going out to bid for private for consultants to go from Animus over here to so that will all be updated at the same time this section, so then we'll have a continuous path through Green Street.
Are we gonna, when you talk about that four hundred block of West Main, weren't we supposed to redo that block to be look like the other blocks down on West from West Main onto Commercial with the the same type of lighting and that was supposed to be a capillary improvement project?
What we hear my scene there.
Okay.
We were supposed to do those two blocks all the way down to Santa Fe Trail. I thought that was on the bid. I mean, we put money into it.
Yes, that's what I say. We're we're looking for a consultant right now. We're RFPs to get a consultant to design that.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
So you what what I'm getting at is.
Go ahead.
You won't do the ADA stuff until that because that would be a waste of money.
That is correct, like in front of the the Fox.
Yes.
We'll let them do it when they do the project. That's correct. Because they have the flexibility to raise the lower of the street, which affects the adjacent sidewalks.
When do we plan on getting that done? I mean, we don't want it to go like First Street again when we keep putting it off.
No, no, it like I said, we're going to go out to design. We're having we're going to accept our request for proposals from design consultants on that. So I my understanding it's ready to go out to bid for that portion to find a consultant and we once we approve a consultant and they start working on it. So we're going to let them design instead of us.
It's appropriate, you're probably looking at probably two years.
Oh, yeah, I mean, like a lot of my goals, but we should.
I would hope it would be sooner than that. You know, design should be six months, natural timeframe, but just depends. So.
What about our other project upon, I mean, just as an update on some of the other projects? What about the highway going up there from KZRT to Wendy's? We have got money from the state, right? We approved that. When is that project going to be kind of worked on?
Again, we're going out to to our request for proposals from design for the design. You're talking about the trail?
Yeah, of course, we're not doing this sooner. I mean, were we waiting and waiting on all this stuff?
You know, I.
I mean, I'm just curious because we waited on First Street and it takes a long time as you see. So some of this stuff, why can't it be going out to sooner?
I I think.
Because we have money appropriated.
Yeah, we went out to bid on that and Jimmy, C-Dot came back and I I don't there was a reason that they told us that we couldn't go out right away, so we we tried going out right away on that and they they came back and I I don't remember the reason. There was a reason because I she told me that C-Dot told us that they held up the project for it it was a minor, I forgot what it was. I couldn't find out, get back with you on that.
Well, yeah, because it seems like every time we wait and wait, the expense of these projects go up more and more, you know, like First Street is, I'm sure we're not going to have enough money for it. We're going to have to dig some in when the bids go out for it. And and the bids are going out here shortly. They've been out already? Okay, I because I talked to a guy today and he said that he was going to be there, so I figured they were out there.
They're we're advertising currently right now. So we started advertising last Wednesday and we basically will advertise again this Wednesday and the following Friday will be a prebid for any interested contractors. So we we plan on opening bids before the first year on that project. Just keep our fingers crossed that we get bids and I heard you say, you know, aim within our budget too.
Yeah, so let's hope we get that so we don't lose. And we need those lights on Garfield too, don't forget that. I gotta throw I gotta throw that one in.
No, we haven't forgot about that.
But no, I I I think, you know, we've kind of had a habit of putting stuff, you know, and I there's sometimes there's reasons for it, but sometimes we need to kind of push those projects so we can get them going because, you you know, they keep extending. It seems like we're kind of every time we do a project, it's in the middle of the winter and it's tough to lay concrete. It's tough to do work in the winter, delays a project. So if we could get all this stuff, our designs, all this stuff done in the winter and get it out, get forbidden to spring and summer and have that stuff done by winter, I think it would work out better for the whole city.
But that was the intent, though I I lost two. We did that house internally and I lost two designers this summer and it just and then and I'm not making excuses. We had a few other things that popped up this and it was a wonderful program, this sidewalk program that we get across yet, but it took a lot of time on both the Nate was one of the main designers once one of the designers went out to the power plant, but he has to go out and inspect the sidewalk that we're putting in. We got to make sure we put it in compliant with ADA or they come down. That's the thing I didn't mention is and maybe you guys know, they they have an ILA, which is an independently licensed architect who comes down and checks our work. So anything we do ADA, we're kind of under their they grade our homework, for lack of better word, you know, make sure we're doing correctly. So I depend on Nate to go out there and make sure we're putting it in right. Therefore, now we're not able to work on First Street plans, so I'm not making excuses. It's just what it was. I wish it would have been out two months ago, you know, but it is it is what it is. We did finally get it out, put together a final push at the end. Let's just keep our fingers crossed we get bids and bids that we can accept.
If I may real quick, so we do have a tremendous benefit to the city in having an engineer on staff who can actually produce construction plans, but for larger projects going forward, we're going to favor contracting out the design phase just to streamline the process and kind of ease the load off of our staff that are already pretty busy. So I'm hoping that'll accelerate the timeline on future projects as well so that we're not getting derailed by designing it in-house, especially the bigger projects.
Go on, what else, yeah?
Excuse me, that's it, guys.
I had one minor question.
Sure.
Ms. Gibson had mentioned something to me several months ago and of course, at the Senior Citizens Center on the west side, you guys took care of that. There was a problem there at the curb and you guys took care of that, but there was a small adjustment that needs to be made on that south side entrance.
I'm aware of that.
It's about that high, so just.
And you're right. Probably when they did the study, they missed that, but we're still bound to it since it's our building.
Yeah, we could do a.
We can fix it. We can either grind it or remove it, replace.
Take it down to there.
Yeah.
Okay.
We did try that last summer. We we put out a basically a sidewalk project, the pieces that are around town that needed either be replaced or they heaved or whatnot. We had one bid that came in out of Plavo and he was so high that he gave his his price that he basically didn't want to do the project price, you know? So the one good thing that we're finding with our our sidewalk program is we're seeing more interest in the local contractors, so we're going to keep our fingers crossed and hopefully those guys will want to bid some of these other projects like the next phase of the of the curb ramps.
Any other questions for Mr. Justin?
What is the order, actual order of preference or priority? Do you have a makeshift is this just a makeshift list or list or what's the utmost? What are you working on now? What are you considering?
It's it's not a this this list isn't it was just broken up by the way the DOJ set up, Attachment G, paragraph thirty six, and then our what we have to do on our regular curb ramps. So we're getting ready to to bid the next phase of curb ramps because we just got through doing a whole bunch of that work this past year, a million dollars worth. We're going to continue to knock out these other items like Attachment G and try to get Attachment G and thirty six done. They're on there, we know they are, so there is no direct order, if you answer your question. We just we know it's got to be done, so.
How often is the actual DOJ? I know you said that they had someone looking at what the work has been done, but how often does the DOJ come down to take a look to see if we are, you know, making progress?
I'd say that that architect, I see him usually about three times a year, four times, and we have to pay him to check our work, which is a bummer, but.
Yeah, that's true.
What's the transition plan? There was an explanation of what is the.
You know, that's a I can explain a little bit about that. It's.
I'm not going to help you, Bob, if I.
Yeah. From what you take off with in that.
Sure, when ADA came about back in the nineties, one of the requirements for for public entities particularly was that we come up with a transition plan, which is a document that describes, okay, we know we don't have ten million, twenty million, hundred million dollars to just do everything right at once, but here's our plan for how we're going to tackle all of these issues going forward. And so what we're doing now is essentially what you would find in an ADA transition plan, basing it, making sure right by making sure our projects that we bid out and do rehabilitation have those ADA components. So we are required to have some semblance of an ADA transition plan. So that's something I believe we're working on right now and it's just to meet basically that checkbox in the ADA Act that says that we have to have a plan for how we're going to tackle all these updates. But I think our advantage, working directly with the Department of Justice, is they know exactly what we're doing and we're we're getting a lot of things knocked off of this.
Good.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, on item two, council request process.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So this follows some discussions we've been having over the last month or so about formalizing our process when a council member wants staff to to take action. We hear you loud and clear. We agree that we would like to formalize that process a little bit and really it's for lots of reasons. The biggest reason I can think of is just sometimes we get direction in a council meeting. Sometimes there's direction just in a passing conversation. This process, I think, will really help us be able to focus on what you all are looking for. And so it documents exactly what you would want us to do and I'm going to go over the form a little bit and then it it just makes a really nice streamlined approach to us prioritizing and helping you meet your goals. So we put together a draft form and it's called the City Council Action Form and it's basically just kind of fill in the blanks. So we're asking for date, who you are, title of the issue, summary of the issue. And then there's obviously multiple things that you all could ask of staff and so we're we have a checkbox phase where is this item for information only? You're just passing along information so staff is aware? Is this something you want to come up on a future agenda or a work session? Perhaps you're you want to sponsor an ordinance or an amending ordinance, that type of thing? Or do a resolution to enact a policy? Or is this just something you want staff to follow up on? So you'll you'll select that and then just some additional information for for staff's benefit, we're asking, does it concern a city department? So we know if you, you know, maybe coordinated with the department already and have that information, does it concern an ordinance? Now, this one we can help you with. We do ask on the form for the ordinance number, which will be the section of our code, but if it's an existing ordinance, we'd like to know in advance so we can do some research on it and definitely we can help you fill out these forms and get that information too. And then last question would be, are you working with a resident, other group, other entity so we're aware of how to coordinate those folks in as well? And so right now, we're just at the form phase, but I'm all ears. This is your time to give us feedback on what you'd like the process to look like. Eventually, I'd love for us to get to an online system so you can just go onto a form and fill it out and it gets directly emailed to us. And then the last thing I wanted to mention in my presentation is I spoke with Les and we've done some talking on council communications with staff in general. It's certainly appropriate to go to staff if you had a question for Mr. Justin. We're just looking for information, so that's that's totally fine. You guys are welcome to talk to staff. I've asked staff here if they do have any interactions with you all to let me know, just so I'm aware of those conversations. But where it would be inappropriate is if you went to a staff member directly and I gave them direction or asked them to do something. That needs to go through me. So the the point of this is to kind of formalize all of that, give you guys a formal process, give us something in writing that we can go off of and hopefully streamline, I think, a little bit better how we're taking your direction and being able to follow up with you.
One thing I wanted to bring up and it happened this last weekend.
Sure.
Is that this one works fine with a lot of cases.
Yeah.
But, you know, got a call from a lady from Hometown Holidays was concerned, I guess, some of the people that were that have floats, that were going to have floats, they were concerned with the snow that was on the street. And she, I guess she tried to call, Mr. Justin couldn't get in touch with him. So then she called me and I called you.
Yes.
To take care of the situation and you took care of that, which was great.
Yeah.
And just to let you know, this is the. And just to let you know, this is the third time that that has happened during hometown holidays issue. Couple of years back, the power was not on out in the front. It was locked up, so couldn't get hold of the city manager. So I ended up calling the department head and they came down. And then another time, there was another issue that the tree wasn't light or something. So those situations come up and, you know, if I can't get ahold of you or we can't get ahold of you or we can't get ahold of, let's say, the assistant city manager, of course, what do we do?
That's a really good question, Mayor. And first I'll preface by saying, you know, this form is no way intended to mean that you can only request things from staff using this form. We definitely understand, there are things that come up through the week. Certainly call me, reach out to me, that type of thing. So what I will do to the second part of your question is put together an order of delegation. So basic, and it'll be a directive from me. So if I'm not available, you know, then here's the next steps in the process of who you would go to. It might be Audra next, a city clerk, that seems appropriate to me. And then from there, certainly, you know, you can get in touch with the department directors, especially on an emergency type of thing.
And that's all well said, but then it puts us in a pickle.
It does.
Because then we are violating ordinance or state charter.
Yeah, what I would, yeah.
That's the issue that we have.
It is an issue and I don't know if Les, you have any thoughts on.
It's a violation to pass on information. It's only a violation if it's inactionable, go do something.
I agree. And if you're raising your concern to staff, let's say to Steve, I don't, I don't think it's a problem. It really is a problem only when you direct somebody, not Steve, to do something.
Yeah, get back to what happened this weekend. Let's say I couldn't get hold of Steve, I couldn't get hold of Audra. So I needed to call Bob Justin, I need to ask him, can you take care of that? That's basically telling him what to do. So if he has to, I mean, it's a very tricky situation.
You're right. And you could just say, Bob, I would like to bring this to your attention and it would be really great if you could do something, right? I mean, I hate to have you have to word things carefully, but I would just say, I would word things carefully. And, you know, people will get it right, rather than calling Bob and saying, Bob, I need you on it, you know, now. That is going to get you in trouble.
That's not good.
And we could say, I tried to get ahold of the city manager and the city clerk and they weren't available, I just wanted to bring this to your attention.
Absolutely. Does it work the same way in email?
Well, and that's, yeah, that's a good point, Councilmember Dubon. I was just going to mention that. So if that does happen, probably a good idea to shoot me an email, shoot me a text, give me a voicemail, just so I'm aware as well if I'm not immediately available.
True.
Okay, good questions. So, you know, looking at the process, I think we can fine tune it as we move along. But this is kind of a first step as, as doing some research in other communities, what they, you know, do and that type of thing. Because I would like to put some rules around this eventually for appropriate follow-up time from staff. Because I don't want you guys to submit one of these forms to us and it just goes into a void and you never hear from us again. That doesn't seem like an effective process either. So we want to put some parameters and some guidelines together on how we'll administer the process.
So who do we, what department do we submit this form to?
The form would go to me. And we'll have it available in my favorite word, fill-outable version on the Google Drive. And then you would just fill it out, email it to me.
Maybe at the bottom it could say, like for office use only, assigned to this department or this department or this person.
Yeah, that's a good question, that's a good suggestion, Councilmember Oboltry. And I thought about that too, so that way we have the documentation right on the form of the follow-up. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And if you are submitting it electronically, obviously there's a signature line on here. We'll make it so you can just type out a signature.
Frank, you can fill it out for my son Garfield.
Yeah. Right, exactly.
Exactly, Larry, you started.
And so another thought, and I wanted to run this by you all, is having a section at work sessions where we present these forms to you as we receive from the council. That way you all get the chance to review them, see them as well. Or some kind of mechanism where we're keeping you all in the loop as to what your counterparts are requesting.
I guess the big thing is, you know, the item, how urgent it is to get taken care of.
Yeah, yeah.
There's something behind it.
So I think to your question earlier and your points earlier, Mayor, which are great, when we put together the guidelines for this process, we'll put some language in there that speaks to your concerns earlier and emergence and things where things really need to happen right away.
True.
Okay?
Other questions?
All right, we appreciate it, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay, on to item three, rules of decorum.
Mayor, councilmembers, I guess all, following Steve's example.
I know, up here.
Haven't been up here since my evaluation. Bad memories.
Just wait till my next one comes.
I know. So Mayor and councilmembers, I know that we've kind of touched on rules of decorum before. And I, I know that you all have kind of mixed feelings about the notion of rules of decorum. I am glad that we haven't really had a need for, you know, rules of decorum during council meetings, but why, why? But like many things in life, I respectfully submit it's better to have them and not need them than need them and not have them. I hope I said that correctly. Good. And so, you know, and there, I do want to say before I get too far ahead, the only thing that really touches on rules of decorum for the Trinidad City Council currently is section two dash fifteen of the Code of Ordinances. I hope you guys have a copy of the written material as of when you there. Also in an email if you have your tablets. But those basically say things like, the mayor is the one who presides over the meetings. You know, everybody is supposed to be acknowledged by the mayor before they speak. That includes, you know, everybody, council members, staff, citizens. And anyway, section, just so you know, section four of two dash fifteen and then sections going further down, paragraphs nine and eleven, also twelve, those are, those are things that are examples of existing rules of decorum. But we don't have many. And I think, you know, it is my position that we need a kind of fairly comprehensive set of rules of decorum. And by comprehensive, I think we could probably cover in basically like five or six rules. But I want to say, you know, a number of things. One is, and then I'll shut up and I want to listen to what everybody has to say. But it is important when you are doing the city's business, when you are undertaking city business, that you be free from interruption, disruption, rude behavior. And you just are able to do the city's business without interruption. And I think that is a lot of what rules of decorum are for. And of course, those rules are only as good as the enforcement mechanism. I mean, I think we all know, and we've kind of learned and have gone through this, but learned the hard way, that the mayor is in charge of, you know, of running the meetings and addressing, you know, disruptive or unruly people and doing all that. I think, you know, the current rules and everything else say that it is the mayor who is in charge of all that. But that is, that is number one. I mean, kind of overarching concept number one is that all of you not be interrupted when you are doing the city's business. The other one, and I think I've gotten a little bit of pushback from some members of council on this, which is fine. But I think it's important when we have people speaking, either in petitions and communications or otherwise, that they not be, that there not be applause and they're not be booing. And I know that sometimes, especially if it's a proposition that I like or support, I love it when someone says something I agree with and there's a rapid round of applause. I'm just kidding. I, but really, right, you don't want people to feel like they're having to necessarily cater their comments while we always want them to be respectful and professional and appropriate. You don't want people feeling like they have to tailor their comments to the prevailing mood in the audience. They ought to be able to say what they have to say and not have people booing or applauding. And I just think that's important. They too, and I know sometimes, like everything has happened. There would be questions or there would be things that would happen. But I think people need to be reminded in an ongoing fashion that when a citizen is up here during petitions or communications or otherwise, if they're a work session presenter, if they're a regular, you know, meeting presenter, that they be able to say their piece and not be interrupted, providing that they are provided, that they are being respectful and they are being appropriate.
Yeah, one of the problems there, as we have seen in the past, because we had a presided that, turns around and he goes, it's here.
Right, no, you're right.
And that's, that's where we, that's where it becomes a problem.
You're right. But I think that is one of the areas, Mayor, that where it needs to be addressed by you immediately. And also comments from the audience, you know, and people yelling. I, you know, I just think that's another example of things that need to be addressed by you, you know, immediately. And another question is the enforcement mechanism, right? Like, we want to be very mindful of the fact that everybody has a First Amendment right to express themselves. And I'm thinking in that context, especially about petitions and communications, because we're not worried about First Amendment rights until someone is a presenter, right? It's otherwise. But, and people should not have to be like a robot and have a, you know, a totally modulated tone and everything. They should be able to, you know, get somewhat excited. But again, as long as they're being respectful and appropriate, they don't have to be warned or anything like that, or even told to sit down. Or the ultimate kind of nuclear option is to ask someone to leave if we have law enforcement.
So is that one and done if someone interrupts a meeting inappropriately? Is there a verbal warning and you say, that's it, one time, you're done?
No, I don't think so. I think there, you know, this is just my suggestion, this is up to you. I would say a warning. And then if it happens again, then you, you can say that on a, you know, second time, the presiding officer can have the individual removed.
I know that. It happened one time where we had someone in the audience that spoke out of line and I did have to shut that person down because I said, you've already spoken? You know, you sit down. I did have to do that.
Right, but I mean also like if somebody, you know, interrupts and then does it again. But you're right, that does happen. They speak during petitions and communications and then they sit down. Let's say somebody else gets up here and then they speak again. I mean, there are a number of different ways in which these kinds of subjects can arise.
They should know because it's posted when they, when they enter.
Right, you're right. And, you know, and look, we know that people are, you know, coming up here and they're frequently angry, right? Justifiably or not, they're angry and they need to be heard. But there are boundaries for what is appropriate behavior. And, you know, really, I don't want to be the behavior Nazi, you know, and tell everybody what is good or what is not good behavior. You're probably thinking, yeah, that'd be a reach for less. No laughing, just kidding. So no, but anyway, I just think, and I have given you also, and I've said these to you, I think, probably several times, but samples of rules of decorum, a lot of which I really like. And I, I don't think that, you know, we want to be, that you want to be real heavy-handed in rules of decorum, but I just want to make sure that you agree with the, my position that we need, you know, more extensive rules of decorum. And that I want to hear you in terms of if you agree with that and if so, areas you'd like to have addressed.
A while back when I was at that mayor's meeting in Denver, I think it was our attorney, their attorney, they brought it up about, they talked about rules of decorum. There were a couple of additional items, I'll look back and see what those were, see if they fit in with what we have, if they have, or if they're in addition to, you know.
I remember you mentioning that, yes.
I, as long as they're not content-based, I think they're fine. I think it's appropriate for us to be able to expect civil conversation here. We can't get work done unless we have that. So, but, you know, I have never wanted anyone to feel like they can't talk about a particular subject that is negative about us or the city because that, that should be what they're free to speak about. But, but they also should be able to be professional about it.
The thing is, that comes up and we've seen it. People come up angry and they are allowed to use foul language if they want to. They, I mean, and that's the sad part of it. Because they don't recognize and realize that we are expecting some decorum. And we can't, and we just got to sit here and listen to that type of language and it's unfortunate.
I think that it's okay for us to say, you know, abusive language. We're not going to use abusive language here and so they should have that.
If it only fits a trip.
Well.
Well, this, I'm looking at this one from Tifton, Georgia. And it's saying that.
It's a difficult subject.
Each speaker will refrain from personal attacks, foul or abusive language and will maintain a civil and courteous manner and tone. I think that's a totally fine thing to say because when they go outside of that, then we can say, you know, we really do want to hear what you have to say, but the rules of doing that here, you can't do it with abusive language.
Right. Or personal attacks.
So is this on the same lines as like you patterned some of the criteria with Manhattan Beach I'm reading?
Right.
So pretty much the same guidelines pretty much apply to all of these resources that you're gathering this information from?
Well, yes, and I want to, you know, like I do, create kind of a frickin' Stinyan monster and, you know, do a patchwork of good provisions and, and yes.
One of the things that was recommended to me from people, someone from CML is that if we can make these very simple and concise, we should post them on the board and run the unit. But maybe even read those prior to the petitions and communications.
I was just going to say that.
They recommend that as well so that they know twice.
Right.
I think that's a great idea.
Right. Or have a copy from people who sign up, whatever you want to do.
Or maybe just change or add the, I call it the disclaimer up on top. And then when everybody signs their signature on that indicates that they've read those.
And I also think it's a, it's a good idea, like if someone does come up here and they're using, let's say, foul language, that they, they have a warning, you know, that you warn them and not immediately cut them off and say, you're done, right? Some people may be more inclined or swayed than others. And I just think that kind of thing is appropriate. But yeah, no, that totally makes sense. So I think making sure they're on notice about what the rules of decorum are is a good idea.
Should be no different with phone decorum also. You know, people don't have the right to cuss you out over the phone over an issue that they're having with a property in town or whatever issue they have.
Right, yeah. But even more so a public meeting, I mean, you're right, that's true.
One thing, I noticed a while back, we were having people who would say, well, I'm giving this person my time. I would like to clarify that you can't do that.
Right, yeah, that's like a congressional hearing kind of notion. Right, right.
It's a personal thing that you have to write, not to give to someone else.
I will cede the gentleman from Alabama. That's right. Anything else?
Any other questions?
Mayor and Council, if I can just add a couple of quick things. So if we do, so based on today's discussion, Les and I will draft a model rules of procedure for you all to review. Ultimately, they're your rules. So you all can review them and decide if there's something you don't like, you do like. But it's designed to make the meetings more efficient, particularly when it comes to decorum. But I just wanted to also recommend that once we establish your rules of procedure, it may be something you want to look at to apply to boards and commissions as well. So that way we have a standard set of rules for how all of our public bodies.
It should apply to all our boards and commissions.
So we'll bring some legislation that addresses that concern too. And then totally happy once we get that adopted to do trainings for all our boards and commission members as well.
Good having podium talent.
Like we typically do, is there anything that council feels like you want to bring up for future discussions and work sessions? Dubon, anything?
No, just what was in the email with the multimodal and maybe the greenway that we talked about.
I'd like to go back and it reminded me when Mr. Just was here about the 400 block of West Main. There was a list of capital improvement projects that we were going to work on. I'd like to update some of those.
One of the things that we are going to do is talk to Mr. Ruber about this is we're going to have a retreat coming up. And I think that we're going to go back to find our capital improvements. Rather than say, you know, X number of dollars for a street, we're going to, no, no. Start really defining what those improvements have to be. That way we can, we know what they will, what the targets are.
And I don't know if it would be.
And I don't know if it would be useful to prioritize those.
Yeah, that would be, that would be a necessity to prioritize.
I guess so.
Right, can you just, I agree with what we gave and talked about, just about this stuff, so.
Yeah, nothing, I don't want to discuss.
Couple of things I just wanted to bring up, just for, just wanted to mention, and I think we need to send out from council to let our, whoever worked on the streets with all the decorations, they've done a tremendous job. I mean, I've heard it from many, many people how beautiful the community looks, and they've done a fabulous job. I mean, inside City Hall, we even got a Christmas tree this year ourselves.
I want to bring this up now, boy, remember you said about the money that we put into this? All right, so remember, you're going to eat your words here.
Okay, the other thing I just wanted to ask council, see if we don't have a problem, is I know that when we had a, the lady from EcoTech was here. They were looking for some property. And if you guys don't have any issues, I got a call from a citizen, we have some property right outside of the town that wants to sell it. And if you don't have a problem with that, I can let her know that this property may be for sale for them. So I can call her and say, I'll give her the people's number and let her contact it. Okay, that's, we wind the work session up, time is now 4:05. And you guys want to take a quick break before we go into our special meeting?
Yes.
Okay.